April 30.
Yeah, it's crazy. Jamie's ready.
You ready, Jamie?
Ready.
I'd like to call to order the City of Sagatuck City Council Workshop for May 3, 2023. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Baldwin.
Here.
Muncie.
Here.
Leo.
Here.
Dean.
Here.
Stanton's excused. Gardner.
Here.
Louis.
Here.
Great. The mayor pro temp is at a track meet. I'd like a motion to excuse her from this workshop.
I'd like to motion to approve council member Stanton's absence.
Great. I'll take that from Gardner, second from Baldwin. All in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Yes, great. Agenda changes. I would like to propose one agenda change. I would like to add Dan Fox from the Fire District Board as our guest speaker for this workshop. Any other, well, I guess we'll start with a motion on that all, all well. Do I need a motion to approve that or just all in favor?
I'll move to add Dan Fox as a guest speaker to the agenda.
Okay.
All right, motion Louis, second Gregory, all in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Yes, great, that's great. Any other agenda changes? Hearing none, that takes us item four, our guest speaker. Dan, we've, we've got you as a guest speaker now.
Thanks very much for accommodating that request, late request for that. Just two quick points. First off, the Fire District, the printed copy, official printed copy of the Fire District's coming year budget will be in, is planned to be, and I expect it'll be in your email inbox, individual email inboxes on Friday, at the latest, this Friday. And the other thing is, the, I would look forward to as many of you as possible, ideally all of you being able to attend the briefing on that budget, which will be a public meeting at the Fire District at the, actually, to accommodate enough people, actually in one of the equipment bays in the, in the Fire Department, Firehouse, whatever you want to call it, on the 15th of May at five o'clock. So, just those two things, any questions about any of that, I'd be happy to. The, the board adopted the budget at our meeting on Monday unanimously, at our meeting on Monday.
Great. Any questions for Dan?
What the budget, this budget, what's the deadline for that budget again? I can't remember.
Yours.
Uh, the 30th, June 30th. Okay, thanks.
Do you need an RSVP for that? Do you need folks to RSVP so you have enough room or just show up?
No, we'll have, I mean, they're going to set the chairs out in advance, there'll be enough room. And I mean, we had no public, it's kind of sadly, in our opinion, had no public at our meeting on Monday when the, when the budget was presented and discussed and what have you. So, how many will be there? But that, that invitation is going in the same way individually to, to the Douglas Council members and to the, uh, Fire, or the Sagatuck Township Board.
Mayor, Dan, can I ask, is, are your meetings on Zoom now? Are they available for Zoom?
Can't answer that.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think they are, and that would be, that would make it easier to attend.
I know there was an, early on, there was an issue with equipment. We didn't, there was some
Yeah.
piece of equipment to allow it that I don't, I, I'm not sure. I, we, I haven't looked at a Zoom meeting, our own Zoom meeting in progress during our meeting, so I'm suspecting the answer is they're not yet.
Okay.
Okay, anything else for Dan? No, thanks, thanks for coming in and flagging that for us. Appreciate it. Um, oh, great. We are at item five. This is public comment on agenda items only. Please limit your remarks to three minutes and to the agenda. Please approach the podium, state your name and where you reside for the benefit of the clerk. Christine.
Hi, Christine Murphy Pierce, 449 Water Street, 121 Mary Street, Wicks Park Bar and Grill, and then the cottage at Wicks Park. Uh, I, I'm on the agenda for the license for the sidewalks. So, it's going to be the same setup for the sidewalks, not the parking spots. So, the sidewalks will be the same, the three on Mary Street, which is mulch area over there, and then underneath my awning. So, I think in the packet is the drawing of all the tables. Everything is the same as last year. And if anyone has any questions about that, I'm happy to, or I can't ask, sorry, okay.
Thanks, you're next on the agenda, so, thanks. Uh, anybody else in the audience that would like to, uh, offer public comment? I, I don't see any, uh, any hands raised on the Zoom. I don't see any on the Zoom call, no. Okay, that will conclude our first public comment period of this workshop. That will take us right to our discussion items, six A, uh, which is the revocable license, Wicks Park Bar and Grill. This is on page two. Um, yeah, Ryan, Ryan C., please, uh, set this up for us.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Good afternoon, Mayor and C. Council members. It's so peaceful and quiet in here. I'm a little bit thrown off. I'm actually, I feel on my comfort zone now that we're used to, told Ryan, it's like a woodpecker constantly just like hitting the walls, but it'll be great when it's done, so. Um, well, as, uh, Ms. Pierce just indicated, Wicks Bar and Grill has submitted an application and sketch plan for sidewalk seating for the summer. Uh, similar, the, the request is very similar to, uh, the past years. One notable difference as far as like the approval goes for this year, we, we did receive a, uh, complaints back in the, the fall related to the, um, kind of rope barrier that was around the seating area along Mary Street. Um, as Pierce has indicated, that the Michigan Liquor Control Commission has required that visual barrier to be, um, present. Um, there was a complaint that folks couldn't get out of a, or passengers couldn't get out of the car, the handicap spot that was along Mary Street there. So, um, she's addressed that concern by indicating she moved the rope barrier, uh, to be five feet away from the curb, so that's no longer an issue. Um, as we've discussed during, uh, prior meetings, zoning compliance, uh, will certainly need to be, uh, a factor after November 1st. The council at this point has approved, uh, continued prosecutorial discretion related to those items and, and flexibility for at least this summer. So, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ryan. Uh, any questions for Ryan from council? We also have Christine here to answer questions.
No.
Um, I, I'll, I'll kick it off with just one, maybe it's the only question. Um, and maybe it's for Christine. Um, are you kind of thinking that there's going to be any unintended consequences on the sidewalk access? Appreciate what you're doing for the folks in the cars along the street, but pushing the, um, perhaps pushing the picnic tables back. Are you anticipating any issues with the sidewalk?
It's, it's very large.
Okay.
It's larger than some of the other, like, streets, you know, nothing's imaginable.
Yeah. Is my microphone on? Oh, Christine, oh, Christine, I'm sorry. Yeah, for the benefit of, for the benefit of the clerk, and yeah, I'm sorry.
Everybody online.
Yeah, and the, the question was just if you're anticipating that encroaching on the sidewalk based.
No, that side of Mary Street, it's a, it's a very large sidewalk, and it's a very large mulch area too. So, I don't see any problems. Usually when we see handy people come out, we usually help them out of their cars, actually. So, it's kind of, but it, it is a little tight there, but we'll, I'll try to move it as much as I can, the five feet, so.
Great, thanks. Garn, you had one?
Same, same approach as last year.
Same.
Great, very good.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, thank you. Uh, Christine, thank you for making that adjustment. I was aware of that concern with those ropes. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Russ.
Anything else from council? Great, so this will, this will be up for a vote on Monday.
Yeah, and although still, the agreement does require that, you know, that at least five feet of, um, space is maintained along the sidewalk for folks to, to be able to use.
Okay, perfect, thanks. Great. Holly, did you have something else on this one or? No? You're good, okay. Um, six B, uh, this is a revocable license for the book nook. You'll find this on page 13 of your packets.
Yeah.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, Ms. Whitfield of the Book Nook of Sagatuck LLC is, uh, looking to install a, um, projecting sign at her, uh, new location. Sign that encroaches into the city's right of way, does require a revocable license, and so that's what's before you, um, today.
Great. I'll, first of off, I'll say that I'm thrilled that the book nooks found a home, uh, right on a prime thoroughfare in town. It should be a lot more visible, so, um, I'm just thrilled that we found a home, or they found a home. But I'll open this up to any council questions or comments.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, uh, just, uh, this is in the historic district. Does this require historic district approval as well?
So, it will receive historic district approval, although it can be administratively approved in a historic district.
Anything else?
And Mayor, question.
Yeah, go ahead, Garn.
Question for Ryan. There are several other types of signs along the road and awnings and such, right? So, it's not like it's the only thing that's going to be sticking out.
Correct, correct, yep.
Yep. Thanks.
Very good. Anything else? Okay, great. Uh, that takes us to, uh, six C, City of Sagatuck Special Events on page 17. Uh, this is, over to you, manager.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor and council and guests. Page 17, I'm going to give you some updates on summer events.
Good.
Um, and talk about some of the special events. Um, so let's start on a very positive note. As far as staffing goes for their, for the summer, we're doing excellent. Uh, that's, that's, that's largely to do with Sarah Williams helping out Scott Herbert with the support of Jamie. Um, and I don't know if everyone knows this, but it takes 20 to 24 people at Oval Beach. Um, and then we hire in, I think it's four, uh, full-time seasonal staff to work with Department of Work, Department of Public Works. Um, and this process begins actually right after the summer season ends last year. So, over the winter, they do recruitment. They call the, the employees from the, the previous summer to make sure that there's interest, and, um, they go through the whole process of advertising and doing the interviews, and, um, so it's really excellent. We're in a, in a very, very good spot. So, that's, that's, that's the positive news. You know, we have a small administrative staff, I'll, I'll just mention that. So, it's, it's, it's a heavy lift, uh, to ramp up that quickly. Um, also, the staff's going to be trained with CPR training after some of the, some of the events that occurred the previous summer, so
Good.
uh, we have a focus on that as well. So, that's the positive news. Moving on, uh, with the cover page that's been submitted, um, we, we've included the number of special events that we have for the city. Everyone loves a good party in the city of Sagatuck. Uh, especially the city of Sagatuck, it appears. Uh, but parties on this scale, uh, don't happen on their own. And so, um, what's becoming increasingly important is safety, right? As highlighted by the Fire Department, need for barricades, what have you. Um, and then I've talked about this before at our budget meetings, but we have this generational gap of volunteerism.
Yeah.
Right? Um, and, I mean, I just use kind of my parents as, as the example, baby boomers. Um, they're, they're enjoying their peaceful retirement at, at this point. And then, uh, my generation, uh, if, if you're working in the city of Sagatuck, uh, you're, you're very busy. You have about 120 to 140 days to make your money, and so not a lot of volunteers during the, during the summer. Um, so what we found is that with Sadaba not, um, well, Sadaba has a very limited scope and, and what they provide. Uh, the CVB, um, great organization, however, they're not in the event planning business. Uh, they've made that clear. And so what you're going to see in the budget recommendation that's going to be coming in front of you is, um, a recommendation for putting some money in for either a consultant to help with special event planning or some type of full-time equivalent that could do both special event planning, um, project coordination, uh, which we had in mind for Ryan Cummins when he was first hired, but I think we all know that he's been very busy just with planning and zoning, and he's doing an awesome job. Um, so event planning, um, project coordination, and then also grant writing, right? I think we're missing a lot of opportunities with, with, with the lack of staff or writing grants. So, you'll see that coming in front of you as a budget recommendation. And then, just moving on with this cover page, Memorial Day Parade, that's all been coordinated. Jamie hosted that meeting. Thank you, Jamie. Um, barricades will come, uh, in the form of vehicles. Um, you'll also see a budget recommendation for purchasing some of those very expensive barricades that can be deployed, but we need to start somewhere with that. Um, Fourth of July, different story entirely. So, we, we had somebody step up, Bertie Holly, um, from the community to do the parade. Um, however, the fireworks, um, is another story, so, um, she does not have the bandwidth capacity, know-how, uh, to coordinate fireworks. So, that's falling on city staff. And, uh, right now, we're in the process of putting together a spreadsheet of potential vendors for fireworks. And there need, this is very late coming, so there needs to be a number of decisions that the council ought to think about to get a vendor in place, which would include, are you willing to change the date for the fireworks? Um, I think historically, you've always, the city's always done Fourth of July. So, I've been told that people would be, some people would be very upset if that date was changed.
Yep.
Um, are you willing to have them, the firework display not shot off of a barge? Because one of the other concerns is that we need our Coast Guard permit, um, which is a pretty long lead time. Um, and then one of the other considerations, which a lot of municipalities are doing, and I hear another organization is doing this, is go to a different type of display, which could possibly be a laser show and/or a drone show. I will mention that drones are super spendy.
Yeah.
Um, another organization looked into doing this for, for an event, and I think it's somewhere between 40 and 50,000. So, we're, we're trying to set up a, a matrix of possibilities, and we have to make some quick footwork here, uh, for the Fourth of July. So, I would appreciate the council having a discussion on that today. And then the, the third bullet point, and the, well, also donations, so soliciting donations as well, that's also fallen on city staff. I'm not overly concerned with that, nor am I overly concerned with, um, getting a barge if needed. I've always had, I've, I've already had two groups reach out and say, hey, look, if you need a barge, we have one. Um, so that's, that's not the big concern. Again, donations, I think I can handle as well. The big thing is the fireworks vendor. Um, the, the, the firm that traditionally has provided the fireworks, Night Magic, um, when I reached out to them, they said, hey, the, the person that we had no longer is doing it, and we're maxed out, and we're losing employees left and right, and they're, they're kind of aged out of it. Um, so that seems to be a continuing theme. I'll stop there.
Yeah, um, thanks for that, Ryan. That was very, very thorough. Um, what, what I'd like as, as a council to try to reach consensus on today is the possibility of, of picking a date that we can actually find a vendor for. Um, it's looking really difficult based on your, I think you've said, based on your early scoping out of things, that Tuesday, the fourth is looking extremely difficult.
Yeah, so I, I'm reaching across the, the state in the Midwest. Um, and, I mean, one that may be in, in our favor, um, is the fact that Fourth of July is on a Tuesday of this year. And so there may be a vendor, because a lot of municipalities actually have their displays on the weekend, um, to bring more people into their town on, on the weekend. So, um, we'll see on that. I just, I just really need to know if the council is flexible on alternate dates, so that when we start calling vendors, um, you know, the first question they're asked is like, okay, what day? Um, and so we need to be able to respond to that.
I'll, I'll, I'll kick it off. I mean, you know, my fourth, my first choice would be to go with tradition and have them on the fourth, but if they say, I can only offer you Friday or Saturday or Sunday, I would grab it and take it, because, I mean, this shortage of fire, there, there's a shortage of fireworks, there's a shortage of firms. Um, it's really become a problem nationally. I, I, like you, I started looking at drone shows, which are cool, but, uh, what I saw was a basic drone show was like $100,000. I mean, it's insane money, so 50,000 sounds like a bargain. That's my take on it. I, I, I would hate for us not to have fireworks on the fourth. I think we'd get a lot of, uh, we'd have a lot of unhappy constituents on our hands if we didn't, but I'm open this, I'll open this up to the council for, for other views.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, thank you. Um, so is the parade going to be on the fourth? It is. It will be on the fourth, Tuesday, the fourth. Um, I would agree with the mayor that I think, you know, given the conditions and circumstances, we need to have some flexibility. I would like to remain traditional, have it on the fourth. However, I think the key here is to get some information on exactly what's available and then make a decision. I'm personally flexible, would like to have it on the fourth, but let's see what's actually available and out there and within budget. And I think then make a decision.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
Speaking of budget, um, fireworks, I, I happen to know something about this. I volunteer with the Venetian Festival, and, uh, to get anywhere decent fireworks, uh, show is going to be at least $20,000. Um, in the past, I don't believe the city has paid for that. It's been done through Sadaba or Rotary or Cow Hill, some, some other vendor has stepped up, or some other entity has stepped up, correct?
My, my recollection is a portion. My, my recollection is maybe we, we've had a pony up maybe half.
And Peter's here, Peter. Five grand.
Five.
Peter, can you step up the mic?
Just for the benefit of the folks in the Zoom, Peter.
We've given like three to five, Douglas has given three to five, and then I think CVB coughed up money, and then, yeah, you're, it's 20 grands that inexpensive. Inexpensive, so one of the things that we're looking at doing for Venetian and leaning heavily toward there is a laser light show. Um, still expensive, but it goes on for about 30 minutes. It has a benefit of being environmentally friendly. You know, we can't say that we are for their environment. I, I would, I would propose and shoot off a bunch of fireworks. Um, it's not good for our waterways. It's not good for anybody suffering from PTSD, possibly veterans who we honor on the Fourth of July, uh, along with our country, obviously. Um, bad for wildlife, it's bad for dogs. Um, I think there's a lot of reasons to look at other things besides fireworks, and when I got pushback on getting an environmental site assessment for $16,000, I was told it was bad, because we just, now we're not going to fix roads or things like that, but then if we were to have this for fireworks, I guess I'd question the where we're going to get the money for that, but not for, um, environmental site assessments.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Ryan.
Go ahead. Would, would the group at the Venetian be upset if we stole thunder from, for the laser show?
It's like the, the highest form of flattery.
I think so.
Do.
And, and there's been, they've, they've looked into it heavily, and I think for like a 30-minute show, it was less than a, less than a 10-minute fireworks, and it, it looks pretty cool, and they can set it to music and all of that. It's, I mean, it's, it's, fireworks are, like it or not, I know nobody likes the C-word, change, settle down, but, um, fireworks are, there's a reason that it's hard to find a vendor. There's a reason that, you know, you, you, people are getting away from it for some very good reasons. And, uh, and I would like us to remain, so when we're talking about keeping an open mind on suggestions, one of the things that I think we need to be open to is not having fireworks and, and going another route.
Other views from council.
Yeah, uh, Mr. Mayor, I would, I would just respectfully disagree with that. I think it's important for the community to find a way to do this. If it's not possible, there's specific reasons why it can't happen. Call me a traditionalist, but I think fireworks on Fourth of July is just, that's part of what.
Beautiful. I, I, I don't know, I love fireworks personally.
I think that should be our first effort.
Go ahead, Holly.
Uh, it's a new world after, uh, COVID. I mean, we, we are all dealing with, uh, you know, there's a shortage of workers. I'm sure that there are insurance and safety concerns with fireworks, you know, adding to the woes of the vendors. I mean, we, we just have to be open to the way things are, and as, as frustrating as it is, because, you know, fireworks are, you know, uh, been around forever, but I am absolutely open to, um, you know, since this is falling to the city, and of course, there's a history as to why it falls to the city, because we don't have a DDA. And so we are always in a position where the hat must be passed, or it's passed between CVB, Sadaba, or, um, volunteers and going to businesses and asking. So, we don't have a cohesive way of having events like Holland does, and like South Haven does, and Grand Haven, and they have budget to do it. And just as some history, I just want to say, in the late 90s and in 2006, there was a very organized, well-researched group of business owners that approached the city council, and it was Dave Locker, it was Guy from Uncommon Grounds, Mark Michaelitis from Lake Shore Lodging, Sandra Randolph from Good Goods, and twice this group tried to set up a DDA, and they never received any response from the city council. And so now it leaves us in a position where we are competing with Holland and South Haven, and they have hundreds of thousands of dollars, if not millions of dollars, and they can go to the state and receive more money that we don't. So, we are always being very nice to Lisa and hoping, and hoping everyone will help in Rotary. Um, and I think since we're looking at this holistically from the cities, because this is now falling to us to handle these events. Um, I also want to point out that I've suggested that we look at taxing, um, putting like a, a user fee, I shouldn't say tax, a user fee on, um, uh, uh, vacation rentals, very small. Um, we talked about it at strategic planning. Uh, we voted to go forward with it, and I think even a very nominal charge, five bucks a week, whatever. Um, these are the kinds of expenses that tourists enjoy, and it's difficult to go back to the 800-some residents that live here over and over and over again, and all the wonderful businesses who do so much and ask and ask. So, I, I think it makes sense to find a way to solve this problem more, on a more macro level, because it's, it, it's just rinse and repeat.
Yeah, I, I, I wholly agree with what you're saying. You know, we, we need to deal with the root cause of this, and I think, you know, this is going to be part of the budget discussion, and how, you know, if, if, if it's going to fall on the city to support events, how we're going to recoup the cost of doing that, because it benefits well, people well beyond the tax base currently. So, I, this is an important discussion that we're going to have to hash out. I, I appreciate that. Um, I, I do though, want us to kind of focus, if we could, just to give the staff some guidance on how we want them to proceed. Helen, I, I'm thrilled that, uh, Rotary is looking at something different, uh, like lasers, and I, I agree with all of what you've said. Um, I think though, given, based on what I've learned about the community and how it does value tradition, I would propose rather than a, a, a very quick change, uh, you know, more of an incremental approach. I think I personally am with Russ that I think traditional fireworks are kind of what's expected to begin to maybe transition though, and, and to start doing some different things. Um, I know we're not London, but, you know, London now for, for New Year's, in addition to fireworks, they have a fantastic laser, fantastic drone show. So, these things are being integrated into, into events, and I, and I certainly like the fact that we, for some of our other events are doing something different. I personally also am in favor of, though, even if they can't be as big and beautiful as the traditional fireworks we've had in the past, that we, that my, my preference would be to go traditional for the fourth. Um, but I do like the idea of trying to integrate in some of these new technologies, i- if not during the fourth, but some of the other events, and maybe even start to do more of a hybrid at some point if we can afford it. Um, Gregory, I haven't had a chance to hear from you. Uh, any thoughts?
Um, I, well, I, you know, um, I, I like the idea of, um, of keeping the traditional fireworks, of course. Um, uh, and I do like change as well. I think I'm, I don't think any of us here are afraid of change. Um, I like the idea of slowly integrating something like that. It would be neat to have a laser and firework show. Um, I like the idea of looking into something like that eventually. Uh, I don't know if, you know, that would be something we would, uh, have to ease into, rather than to just go, I can already hear it from the street. I'll tell you that right now. Uh, I'd hear it from the merchants and everybody else. It would be so bummed out if it wasn't real fireworks. Um, uh, but, uh, but I, because I, you know, I remember when, uh, there was the possibility that we weren't going to have them that one July 4th.
Exactly.
And, uh, they were going to move them to September or something, uh, and, and, oh gosh, people were upset about that as well. So, there, there is an element of tradition here, and I think that should be respected. Um, but I do like the idea of, uh, different things. I love those drone shows. Um, I'm thinking probably in a few years, those will come down in price, you know, as they become more popular. Um, I, I would go to a drone show before I went to a firework show, because I'm, I'm more fascinated with those myself, so.
Garn, did you want to say something?
Yeah, so Rotary, obviously, we have a lot of experience lately talking about this. Um, and we have, uh, as a group, gone totally away from fireworks, primarily because of the environmental issues. It's one of our main pillars as an organization, environmental consciousness. Um, so, you know, that is the primary reason. Secondarily, the effect that it has on veterans and animals. Um, I had a dog before he. I had a dog before he went over the Rainbow Bridge and it was absolutely horrible for him. I mean, the older he got, it was just and friends of mine who live in both cities won't, they'll either take the dogs away or, you know, put them in the back room or the basement because it's just it terrifies them. So and and I'm not, I don't have any veteran experience, but the PTSD that some folks suffer, I I think it's just, I understand that it's tradition, but at some point in time with our country and the number of wars that we fought in and the effect that it's had on people, we have to accept and recognize that perhaps there are alternatives that are less impactful for folks and animals. So for from a Rotary perspective, you know, when we first looked into the drones and Helen's talked about that is for a nine minute show, forty some thousand dollars, I'm looking at Lisa because she's part of that too. It was nine minutes. The light show, thirty minutes, within the regular budget of fireworks, fifteen, I think is where we're at. And it's pretty darn awesome.
And it's different. You can add to it. You can thank your sponsors through it too.
You can, yes, they will. It it's it's really quite nifty. And so I I'm always reluctant to poo poo something when we haven't even tried it yet. Especially if it's budgetarily something that can be managed. The other thing we have to take into, it is the third of May. And anybody who's in this business of putting on fireworks or shows, you're way past your deadline. And the likelihood of getting an organization that does traditional fireworks is near impossible. And if you can, it's going to cost you. And so that's that's something to keep in mind. So, you know, that's that's where I'm at, just, you know, personally, through Rotary and our commitment for the environment, I will not support a firework show. I will not support us spending money on a firework show. I just I just don't think it's the right way to go. I think we have a lot of other options that would would be quite awesome. So as far as the date, you know, again, good luck getting anybody on those weekends, like I from the Saginaw area, we and Bay City, Holly knows, they have fireworks, I don't know, a week every day. And it's fine, but the biggest turnout is always the Fourth of July, no matter what day of the week it's on. That's your day. So, you know, if we can get somebody to do, whether it's fireworks or a light show on any day, that would be great, but I won't support us spending money on fireworks.
Just curious, how much is for thirty minutes? How much is a laser light?
You remember, we talked about this the other day. It's like fifteen. It's pretty.
I was going to say, I thought it was south of twenty. It was less than fireworks.
Paper large. We don't have to get a coast guard. You know, it's basically, it's pretty nifty. We can send you the link. It's it's really cool how they set it up.
Yeah.
It's really.
I'm just wondering if that would attract as many people as the fire.
It's it's like a light show over the harbor. It would literally be set up and well, we're talking about possibly over at the yacht club because visually, but it'll literally be the entire harbor.
I'm anxious to see it.
Yeah, it's it's really, you know, given the opportunity to try something new, I think it's a really nifty. And especially given the people who come here to our community, they tend to be just having short term rentals myself. They tend to be pretty conscious about environmental stuff. That's why they come here. Yeah, so.
Well, I mean, you guys know what I do for my day job. You know, I got a dog, you know, I I member of the American Legion. And I frankly, I'm myself and my brothers are very lucky that we still have all our fingers in our eyesight after our childhood where we where we would where we would beg our dad to take us across to Canada to buy large amounts of pyrotechnics. So I mean, I have to, I have to, that's, you know, there's that bias there, but I also have to sort of, I agree with everything that's been said. I do though feel that I I feel that there is, and I've heard it around the table, that, you know, you know, there there is a love of that tradition. It may be not the best way to do it these days, or maybe environmental concerns, and I get that, you know, working for Eagle. I'm still in favor of some, if we can get some form of explosives, I I am in favor, but but I do, I really am also. I'm also really excited though about innovating, because I think a lot of what we're doing in Sagatuck these days is innovative. And I like to be on the cutting edge of innovation. So I'm thrilled with what you guys have seen. I'm excited about it. Given that we probably are going to not get, you know, first class seats on a fireworks show, given the situation with the vendors and that it's May and we've lost our prime vendor. I'm just wondering if we can do sort of some sort of hybrid, you know, so some lighter explosives. And then and then some lasers. I mean, imagine, I I mean, imagine if you got the laser vendor in and showed them the radar station and showed them a bald head. And say, you know, is there a way you can sort of integrate that? You know, I'm showing Russ, I'm looking at you for
Yeah.
For a reaction of horror or a reaction of delight.
I think it's sort of cool. I've had people suggest that. It'd be interesting to see how how it would actually work. So thank you, Mr. Mayor, for kind of zeroing us back in on here. I I I really appreciate the long term discussion here. I think there's some options. Obviously, as things change, you have to adjust. I'm focused on this year, we have an immediate need. And from my perspective, let's see what we have and what we can get and make a decision from there. As opposed to the blue sky stuff is wonderful, but we have an immediate need, an immediate community need. And I think about this community over the years, if you put a call out that we're at the risk of not having the fireworks, the word's going to get out pretty darn quick. There are several people, I've written names down that I could easily call and say, hey, can you give us some help? The community has always come to the table to assist with this. So I don't think we should dismiss the community to come forward, even though we don't have an official organization. I'm interested in seeing how we talk about the overall structure of events and things like that. But I think just right now, we really need to be focused on what we can do for the Fourth of July. Let's stay focused strictly on that. And then let's talk about the other options down the road, so.
And and we haven't heard from the mayor pro town on how she feels, but right now, right now, it sounds like we're a bit divided. There's about half of us, if I'm just reading the room correctly, that would like to maintain the tradition of the gunpowder. But I think everybody also likes the idea of lasers. You can tell I really like Austin Powers movies. I just do. I'm sorry. Now, if we could only attach them to fish in the harbor like sharks with lasers attached, now that would be, nevermind, I'm sorry. And this is not helpful to you as a Ryan.
No, actually, no, it's not.
Okay. So I would say, I would say, I I think we're all in agreement. Let's see what we can get. I don't think it it, you know, if we can't get the full enchilada fireworks wise, but I you know, maybe you could touch base with Helen or or Garn from Rotary on what they've identified for lasers. And mention some of the cool opportunities, given our unique laser tower, which we use to, you know, start forest fires in California, whether something, I don't know.
Garnet, if I'm sorry. It would be neat if you could, if you know, whatever video that they've sent you, just to, if you think about it, send us, send it to us. Because I'd I'd like to see it. I I kind of like the idea of having, you know, a laser show and just a few fireworks at the end, you know. I'd like I like the compromise. I'd like to see, we need to have a little bit of both, and I think that would be a great draw, a great uh uh draw for people.
Let's see what's available.
Oh, yeah, okay.
That's a great idea, but let's not get too attached.
And is anybody like mortified that, you know, given it's a big tourist weekend anyway, that if we have to do it on a Saturday, Sunday of that long, because most people I think are going to come into town and stay.
It's always been the fourth, any anytime in this town, when whenever the fourth comes on and it gets packed. And the great thing about the fourth being in the middle of the weekend, us having celebrations in the middle of the week is that it helps to fill our businesses. So they have, they people plan to have D P here during the whole week. When Fourth of July falls on a weekend, people only stay in their in their rentals for, you know, two, three nights, just for that weekend. You'll get people that'll stay here and spend money in our businesses throughout that whole week, when Fourth of July is in the middle of the week.
Do you do you have what you need to to run with?
I do, and I I called the laser vendor. And as any good vendor would say, I got another municipality that's interested, but we do have a small crew that could possibly do it. I'll call him immediately after this meeting and say that you're open, the council's open to it, which is news that I information that I didn't have before this meeting. And hopefully he'll take my conversation a little more seriously. And then, yeah, outside of that, I I totally get it. I'll start reaching out to private businesses as well to see if they could help with the display on their property. I know that Coral Gables has stepped up in the past for similar events and situations. We have the Red Water Group who may be interested. So I'll I'll try to work on some type of combo. And just start networking, focus on this for the next couple of days before your Monday meetings. Hopefully have some more information at that time.
I I'm very excited about a hybrid, and then we can get community reaction to what the hybrid was like, and if they liked one part better than the other, you know, then that might help.
If you could send us, like I said, to Garnet, any of the videos of these uh these demonstrations so that, you know, we can get a better idea of what what it would look like.
Go ahead. And if there's any concern about there being fireworks on the Fourth of July, trust me, there'll be some private parties that have gone down wherever. There was a display last Saturday.
Yes.
That was a private display. That was pretty intense. And so I'm not worried about people getting fireworks. It's just whether it's going to be something that's to official channels. So anyway, just leave it at that.
It's a fair point. Actually, I I would, I would agree with that, that a lot of times if you don't have something, then people are going to be more inclined to do things on their own, and then it's not one set thing. So that's one thing I've noticed is I think there was a wedding or something. But yeah, again, my dog was tormented for, you know, six hours while, you know, having to calm down from it, but um.
Yeah, no, I mean, my dog doesn't even like going to the track meet.
Yeah, it's not with a gun. Yeah, it's not going to, it's not going to stop people from setting off fireworks. I would agree with that.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, one more.
Would you like to segue then to a conversation about staff and our need for that? Is that something you want to discuss?
Um, I was thinking, that's gonna, I think that's gonna be a big part of our budget discussion. And and Jamie's sending out a poll on that, because Holly called it. I mean, this is, this is, this, you know, right now, we keep putting Band-Aids on this. We had the same issues last year. We keep putting on a Band-Aid. And we got to either, we either need the business community to decide that, you know, these things are important to the business community and there needs to be management and funding. Or if we take it on, we need to find a way to get the funding to give Ryan and company, the staff to do this. I mean, that's the discussion, I think, for the budget. I mean, where where we're going with this. Because, I mean, I think we've heard, tell me if I'm wrong, but Sadaba has basically said that that, you know, they really don't want to do much in the events. And we've lost, you know, we lost Cow Hill from Venetian. Thank God Rotary stepped up, but, you know, this keeps happening. And it seems to be a trend, and I think we're going to have to, we we're going to have to delve deeply into the root cause. I mean, i- if if I'm open to having a little bit of the discussion now, but I think once we see what the numbers look like in the budget, that might give us something more to focus on.
If I may, so, you know, we've been in this kind of reactive position for a couple of years now, and it's it's very difficult. I mean, Brian's going to spend now the next couple of days trying to get an answer for us. He's already got a plate full of projects that we've given him. So that's, in a way, we have to decide whether it's time to be proactive. And and for me, it's a matter of, and Holly and I have been talking about this since we got elected, really trying to help with that whole economic development function. And it's, it would be worth the time and energy to have a staff person who can help get that going. Because the businesses, they do want it, Gregory knows, but you have to have somebody who's actually leading it because they themselves have businesses to run, so their hearts are in the right spot. But geez, who has the time? So to be able to proactively bring someone on who's who's responsibility it is to manage these, you know, however many hundred projects proactively, plus begin to put the pieces in place for a true economic development development function, which we've talked about at our strategic planning. We are way past time for that, I think. And even if we get to the point where that person is able to help us create an economic development function, there'll still be, I think, plenty of work for that person to do. Ryan mentioned grants. Every day I have something to come across, whether it's Eagle or M M L or small cities. There's so much out there that we don't have the time to pursue.
May I?
Go ahead, Helen, yes.
Are we not able to look into getting a D D A? One thing I've never been able to get to the bottom of is, why don't we have a D D A?
So I can explain. So again, the D D A was proposed by both of these groups. And they came before council and there was no action taken. And if you you can follow up with these folks, they're extremely frustrated. And 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 the way it works, it's something called a a TIF and and T I F.
Financing, yeah.
Yeah. And so basically what it does is it takes the value of all the properties downtown, it caps them at this year's value. And think about this, late nineties, two thousand and six, where has our property value gone? And and you're, you are shifting that or you're capturing that appreciation in the property value to that D D A. That is now so so the city can count up to the cap as a stable revenue source. But the additional revenue gets pushed into your D D A. That's a lot of money. And that's a lot of money that South Haven has and Holland has and Grand Haven and Traverse City.
Is there any reason not to look into it now? I mean, we could be sitting here and going, hey, it's twenty twenty three.
It's a, it's, we're probably at the height or we're at a very high property value. I don't know. It's not really a common, tiffs, tiffs are not a common uh tool used right now. It was very popular in the nineties and the two thousands, but there's not a lot to capture right now. It's a, it's, it's a damn shame that we didn't do it, honestly. But that that's, I've been looking at this and I've talked to Petosky and Traverse City, I've talked to different people, networking. It, I really think that we should look at a user fee like Palm Springs does on their vacation rentals, even if it's nominal. Because as a city, we already are in an unusual situation where we have three thousand acres of parkland, right? Over three thousand, which is very unusual for such a small town. And then we have, we have this, we have a hundred percent tourist tourist based industry. And when when we all talk to businesses, my God, you know, they're bombarded. Here, can you help us pay for this? Can you help us pay for that? We're hitting up Lisa, we're hitting up Sadaba, we're hitting up, everybody's hitting up everybody. And everybody's trying to make their money for the summer, you know, they don't, they, we need something that's consistent. You can count on this. The tourists can count on it. The businesses can count on it. The residents can count on it. We need to do this, and all the other communities around us have done the D D A. I don't know that we can do, I don't even know if the TIF makes sense for us, really. We can talk about it. But there are other options. There are other options, but the the TIF, it's, it's, it's about the property values downtown. And I don't know.
Yeah, right.
I mean, you're a financial person, so we can, we can work into it.
Brian, if we were to add like a department like that, is there really room here in City Hall?
The answer is yes and no. So Ryan shares an office with our assessor who's here once a week.
Right.
So.
That could be a shared office.
We've talked about flex, doing some more flexible space upstairs here. So it is, it is possible to fit one more human.
Okay. Because it's tight in here as it is, I think, yeah.
I agree with that, one hundred percent.
If there's anything we've learned from COVID, a lot of work can be done remotely. Folks really like that, and it's actually pretty healthy.
Yeah, and to add one more bit to this sort of this knotty problem, you know, you know, when, you know, Sagatuck is, I I think I, it's fair to say, sort of, you know, the leader in the tri-community area on putting on these great events, which draw people to Douglas, which draw people to the township, which draw people to all the stores, businesses, gas stations outside of our tax base. And so suddenly, you know, we are spending our taxpayers' dollars, you know, to support events that are benefiting all these other communities, which, you know, is frustrating. Because we don't have that. I mean, I would like to have something where, you know, the funding source was shared. You know, I mean, if, and it was looked at more holistically among the tri-community area, right? Because once again, I mean, you got you got Holland up there, to Holly's point, you you know, you got South Haven down there, and then we're just like sort of these three little entities that sort of are trying to, you know, do it right.
And the last, the last several years now, it's it's really changed with new managers and who are working quite collaboratively together. It makes sense to have, to consider a tri-community type of focus agreement.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
Yeah, when I was working in Door County, this is the way that we shifted our focus was to a more regional approach, because all our little enclaves are little hamlets. We're all putting on events, but we weren't talking, we were very siloed. Suddenly, we started communicating and then we were sharing things like parking space in one municipality and busing people to the event in another municipality. But we were, those people were traveling around in the area that they were bused from. And so we're just spreading out the number of humans and everyone benefited from that. And the customer experience was also much better because, you know, there was just wasn't enough service workers to accommodate all the humans. Not enough restrooms, but if you spread them out. Not enough restrooms, but if you spread them out, um, suddenly there's a better customer experience, and then. Uh, all the ancillary businesses were making some, some, some money off of the, the regional approach, so. I'm one hundred percent in agreement with the regional approach, how that happens, I still don't know, but, um. I have a lot more to say on it, uh, at another time.
Yeah.
All right.
That's good, we're talking about.
And I would, if I could just add, I would encourage everybody to look into the TIF, to look into the DDA structure, to, you know. Think out of the box, look for solutions, you know, if there was a way we could merge with Douglas's DDA, I don't think. The state of Michigan rules allow it, but.
Yeah.
Perhaps it could have, I don't know, I mean, I, this is kind of an all hands on deck type of situation, because. We have to figure this out as a community.
And, and it goes back to, and Gregory knows this too, and just repeating what's already said, the number of times that we're hit up at my establishment. Up's kind of the wrong word, asked, requested, you know, and we'd love to support everything that's going on, it's just impossible. And to say no to some really good organizations that are trying to really do, do good things is really difficult. But this type of focus, then again, is very proactive, and it actually will help your businesses, um, cuz they're not being. Asked all the time.
Yeah, we need, this really is no way to run this economy, like this is, we, we. Rely on, all of us rely on these events, all of us, and the way we're running them. That we're sitting here having this conversation in May, we need to have this be more structured, and with the, um. The cooperation between the tri-communities unprecedented, Lisa crushing it at CBB. We're engaged with the businesses, we, we're ready, I think, to really take this to a higher.
Goes back to what we've said at our strategic planning sessions about being a professional organization, we really, we've transitioned from a village to a city. And this is just one more way of operating like a professional organization, and having this type of function.
So, yeah, to, to kind of put a bow on it, I mean, I think, I think you can probably sense from the council that there's. Definitely an, an appetite for increased cooperation and cost sharing to make events, and to remind our, our neighbors and our friends. Uh, that, you know. We need to be in this together, you know, the fireworks look just as beautiful from the other side of the lake as they do from this side. Um, you know, we need to really start doing that, and I'm sure, you know, you're gonna get hit up someday for. Borrowing the barriers when we're not using the barriers, you know, and it's a shame that we weren't able to cooperate from the get-go and share, share those and, and. And agree a schedule of events, where, where the barriers would, would be in use and, you know, we'd be monetizing that, that resource, that asset all the time, so. I hope that gives you some sense where the council is in terms of, you know, you. It's not fair for, for the Sagittuck taxpayers to take this on alone, you know, this, these benefits, this benefits all tri-community area, and we would really like to have that conversation with our peers. Do I got that right?
You did.
I think I do.
Yeah.
Good conversation, thank you.
Right.
Great. Okay, um. That takes us to C. Uh, okay, now we got, we've got a few event applications, six D special event application, SCA market page nineteen. Get that from Jamie, um, just looks fairly standard from last year.
Correct, Mr. Mayor, and this will be on your agenda for Monday.
Okay, any, any questions on this one? It looks like last year's.
Just excited.
Yep.
That's good.
Yep. Right, uh, nothing on that, we'll go to E, another special event application, one of my favorites, Music in the Park, page thirty. I'll always look forward to this one, anything else on this one, standard?
Nothing to add, thank you.
Excitement.
Yeah, good, love it.
Just a reminder that, uh, there's more participation on social district, so, um, and that alcohol is not allowed to be, be brought privately. So, find your favorite restaurant that has a social district license and buy a beverage.
That's a very good point, very good point. Um, and then, uh, something I'm looking forward to, uh, the special event application for the Town Cryer Race, page thirty-seven. Uh, once again, we did that last year, anything on that, folks? I gotta get running, or I'm gonna be suffering, are you gonna run it this year?
I am.
Good, right, at least I can beat, hopefully I can beat you.
Wow.
Said at least I can beat.
I think I said hopefully. Only if I move the signs again like last year.
Yeah.
And you run to Fenville by accident, yeah, okay, never. Um, anything on any of these? I'm sorry, we kind of. Okay, good, uh, we are at item seven, public comments on anything and everything, anyone in the audience wish to offer public comment? Christine, I'll let, Lisa, do you mind letting Christine then?
Hi, Christine, four four nine Water Street, one twenty-one Mary Street, uh, I know that. It doesn't, it. It mattered this summer with the outdoor seating, the actual outdoor expanded seating, uh, and I know that's gonna be a big. Agenda item coming in the fall for the zoning and the special land usage and everything, and, um. I just wanna be very involved with that, in the sense that I know I have a big spot, and I know all, you know, so it's very important to me. And I think it's important to other businesses, cuz when that letter, when the letter got, went out, I got like fifty-two texts from all the restaurant owners. They thought that they were changing all the rules this year. So I calmed, you know, everyone, I was like, no, this year's everything's fine, but everyone really needs to be on, you know, to get their stuff in in November. For how it's gonna go, especially if a public hearing has to happen for each establishment. So I just don't want it to get sprung on anyone, and then, and then everyone starts fighting again, so, because I think it's pretty nice in town right now. So I would just like to be, you know, abreast of all of that stuff and keep everyone else in the loop when it comes to. Uh, the outdoor seating and every. Every restaurant has a different piece of property, so it's all, it's gonna be very hard to put it into a box. So I think there's gonna have to be some creativity when it comes to each restaurant and the outdoor expanded area. So I just want that to not happen come May third of twenty twenty-four, and then you're like, oh, we're not gonna do it this year. I just don't want that to happen, so that's all I have to say.
Thanks, Christine, thank you, um, Lisa, please, go ahead.
Lisa Maniz, Sagittuck Douglas CBB, um, executive director. Just wanted to comment on what you discussed for an event coordinator or event planner for possibly the tri-communities, it's something that. Our board has kind of dabbled in and discussed, um. I agree that I think it should be the tri-communities contributing to a position like this, and if we can get. Involvement from Douglas, possibly Fenville and Sagittuck, I think it's something that, um, the CBB board would entertain. Part of that. Payment, part of the salary.
Thanks.
Not sure how that would work, haven't worked all that out, but I just want you to know that we're here too, thinking about the same things.
Thanks, Lisa, glad you were here today. Um, any other comments from the audience? Uh, seeing none, uh, anyone on the Zoom that wishes to offer public comment? Uh, I don't see anything, Jamie, no, okay, that will close public comment, uh, you have correspondence in your packet, page forty-six. Uh, that takes, sorry, do you have a comment on?
Uh, it's very interesting read, if you haven't read the letter from the Seventh Day Adventists, um.
Yep.
There have been times in this community where Jehovah's Witnesses have walked through the community, the Mormons, so. I'm kind of curious, I don't recall receiving a letter like this, just saying, look, we're gonna be coming, there's nothing you can do about us coming, so I think it's just an acknowledgement that. They're gonna be here, I don't think. They, they eventually first amendment, so clearly they run into some opposition in some other communities, so, um. Just wanna make sure that we note this, that this is in here and people are aware of it, that I think that's an extent of our control over anything like this.
Right, good point, thanks.
You wanna answer the door, go right ahead.
Works both ways, right, you have a right not to answer your door.
Well, yeah, my grandmother, who used to live down in Lake Street where CJ Badrick lives. She always used to tell a story about the Jehovah's Witnesses would come to her door, and they'd knock on her door, and she would try to evangelize them, she was. And she was a kind, she was a congregationalist, up at the first congregation, they stopped stopping at her house. So anyway, to your point, it goes two ways, and, you know, it's just kind of the thing that we experience, so.
Okay, um, I, I think I'll, we can carry this discussion on during council comment if you wish, and I'll go, I'll start with you, Helen.
Uh, no, I don't care to talk about anymore about the door knockers, um, I, I do wanna say that Friday was Arbor Day, and we did plant a tree in town. A Cleveland pear, not the Columbus pear, definitely Cleveland pear, but it's really beautiful, and it was a fun event, and I'm very grateful to be part, part of Tree Cities. In USA.
Oh, not, not much, CJ, uh, Badrick on our planning commission and I are busy building. A fruit stand, which will be outside at Back to the Fuchsia Flower Shop, it's really cool. Jean and her boyfriend John are growing a huge garden, all of the vegetables and fruits. That will have a marketplace as soon as the, all that comes in, and out there at the corner there. Uh, we'll wheel that thing out of the garage every day, and you'll be able to get fresh vegetables and fruit, uh, locally grown. Uh, at Back to the Fuchsia Flower Shop.
Thank you.
No comments at this time, thank you.
Russ, uh, the only comment I would add is that last night my father-in-law came home from Phil's, and he said, I saw Gregory at Phil's. And he said he saw, I guess he saw, but the very first thing he mentioned was he's gonna be the first customer down for herbs and vegetables and so forth at your cart, so. Make sure you get an advance order from Charlie.
Well, good.
Very super excited about it.
Yeah, he's, he's a very valued customer.
Yeah, good idea.
Garden, any comments, all set, okay, um, nothing from me tonight, it was a good, good workshop, I'm glad we're discussing some of these. Not only the pressing needs to give staff some, some guidance, and I, and I do wanna compliment staff, though, I do think, you know, we are. Much farther ahead of the game than we, we've been in past years, given some of the big change that's happened after COVID, um, so I, I, compliments to the staff, I know this isn't easy. And I know you guys have been putting together a lot of packets for a lot of new committees and, and new work groups. Um, so I can, I, I think I can speak confidently on behalf of the council, uh, that this is not going unnoticed, it is appreciated, we really do value. You, Ryan, you know, Peter, Jamie, uh, our legal counsel, everyone, for all the work you're doing to get us ready for these meetings, so we can have these. You know, these, these deep, you know, deliberative discussions, so I really appreciate it. Uh, we all do, and with that, I'll take a motion to adjourn to get everybody out of here.
Move to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
Okay, motion, uh, Louis, uh, second, all in favor, please say yes.
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 Me and adjourn, right.